Yeah, it's still technical. Oh, there it is.
Alright, we're good. Pursuant to Section 14, pursuant to Section 841411 of Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, August 5th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummins Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Vice President Dr. Holman will also lead us in the OPS Vision Admission Statement.
First Division, every student, every day, prepare for success in our mission. Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college career and life.
Thank you. Mr. Ray, roll call please.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Holman.
Here.
Crackey.
Here.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Snipe.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
And I'm present.
Thank you. We will move on to Board and Superintendent Communications, starting with our Superintendent, Dr. Logan.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education and those here in attendance. Last week, the eight-person team of Omaha Public Schools leaders, including our Board Vice President, Dr. Holman, the President of Omaha Education Association, Robert Miller, the President of Service Employees International Union, Steve Owens, and the President of the Omaha School Administrators Association, Dr. Dan Heck, spent, as well as staff, and to include myself, spent the week at the Public Education Leadership Project at the Harvard University Business School. We applied for a grant and were accepted to attend this week-long Summer Institute to address the strategic problem of practice for our school district. With our new strategic plan set to launch this upcoming January, the team selected a challenge that will help set the groundwork to support the success of the strategic plan. We will share more specific details regarding this work in the weeks and months to come, more like weeks. The first day of school is approaching. Wilson Focus School, with their alternate schedule, is first. Wilson's first day is Thursday, July 25th. New Principal, Luanne Jacobs, and I look forward to greeting students on their first day back to class. For the rest of our students, please continue to enjoy your summer break, and we look forward to welcoming you back next month on August the 14th. Speaking of back to school, the Back to School Bash and this year's literacy and book fair is on Saturday, August 10th. For all OPS staff and families who have added to our second annual Back to School Bash at Baxter Arena, this year's event also includes a book fair to help our students continue the momentum as they've built reading and logging nearly 3 million minutes to date as part of our summer reading program. Students will have the opportunity to select some of their favorite books to add to their home libraries. All 63 of our elementary school principals and other staff members will be there to greet and welcome back students and answer any questions ahead of the start of the school year. The event features free books, backpacks, photo opportunities with school mascots, Star Wars characters, Batman, and I'm assuming Superman, although he was left out, and Marvel superheroes. Students will have opportunities to climb aboard a fire truck, explore the Omaha Police Department Able One helicopter, I think there's going to be free candy, hopefully get some free fruit too, and trinkets from community partners and reconnect with friends. This has also been sponsored by Aggrega. Last week, we held our, actually two weeks ago, first meeting on district readiness for the opening of school. We held a job fair at Monroe Middle School for open positions in our Student Transportation Division Nutrition Services and for open paraprofessional roles. The job fair drew more than 150 attendees and nearly 100 applications for open positions. We thank all of the folks in Human Resources and other departments who supported that effort to make sure that we are ready to open on time. District leadership will continue to hold regular check-in meetings, matter of fact, there's one tomorrow morning, to receive our students on the first day. Some kudos are in store for OPS students. Leslie Saavedra Bohoquez from South High Magnet and Mason from Benson High Magnet, their artworks Ignacio and Karen Pride respectfully are featured in the My Life in Nebraska Art Exhibit at the Governor's Residence. The Governor recognized students during a ceremony on June 18th in Lincoln, the Nebraska Arts Council, and the Omaha Public Schools sponsor of the exhibit. At Beveridge Magnet Middle, the school is the Nebraska Department of Education's 2019 Outstanding Nebraska Middle School Career and Technical Education Program, that's fantastic for Beveridge. Also, congratulations to Paul Kosh Bancroft, Paul Kush, I'm sorry, I pronounced his name wrong because I know it's Kush, Bancroft Assistant Principal, who was inducted into 2019 Eight Men Football Hall of Fame. The ceremony took place at the Tom Osborne Family Sports Complex in Hastings, Nebraska. Congratulations to you, Mr. Kush. Also, congratulations to OPS students appointing to Skills USA Leadership Positions at this year's state award winners from Benson High, North High, Bryan High, and the Career Center received appointments. Super special shout-out to, or recognition to Bryan High School student Saw Ket Hutu, who received third place in Educators Rising Pre-K Children's Literature Contest for his Corinne Alphabet Book. It's really extraordinary, so I hope that people will have an opportunity to see it. Also, kudos to Burke High School Swimming and Diving Coach, Richard Hood, who's a living legend, who was the National High School Athletic Coaches Association 2019 National Swimming and Diving Coach of the Year. The Nebraska High School Coaches Association's nominated Hood for this award. Selection is based on longevity, service to high school athletics, honors, championship years, and winning percentage. Super special recognition for Coach Hood. At King Science Technology Magnet Center, sixth-grade teacher, Mr. Galdemez, who recently received one of the 50 Giant Moon Map Packages from the Aldrin Family Foundation and Share Space Education in celebration of the 50th Anniversary of the Apollo 11 Moon Landing. In addition to the map, the package includes reference books and curriculum resources. He's very dedicated to space exploration, he's a star in our school district. And last but not least, but congratulations to students from Benson High School, who placed in this year's 2019 Leadership and Skills National Conference in Louisville, Kentucky late last month. Congratulations to all of those folks who make us OPS proud every day. This concludes my remarks, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Logan. Moving on to Board Members, Communication. Mrs. Gadding, my apologies.
I just want to echo the comments regarding Coach Hood. He retired this past spring, and many of you know that I have mentioned him often here at the Board Table for the fantastic work he's done out there. My second item is that I requested an agenda item related to OSERS and our fiduciary responsibility for tonight's board meeting with Board Officers. If anyone on the Board would like more information or join me in that request, please send me an email.
Thank you. Any other Board Members, Communication?
Well, I have a list of some things, it'll be short. Congratulations to the students that graduated summer school. We had some high schoolers, I attended some graduations, and I believe over 50 students that I, from Central and North, that I got to meet that walked across the state to earn their high school diploma, so best of luck to you guys. Also, I had an opportunity from South High School to attend The West Side Story, the musical. I didn't know it was a musical, but I was very impressed with our OPS students and staff that were there during the summer and put on an amazing play. It wasn't just OPS students, I think we had some other students from the metro as well attend that, so kudos and thank you so much for allowing me to attend. And then also, to my colleagues on the Board, I was purchasing a picture frame at Mankelson's and ran into the owner and told him I was on the school board, and he wished us good luck and congratulated us on our hard work and gave the Board Members some dots back in the back, so just to let you guys know, there are people always watching and rooting us on and see the great work that we're doing, so I'm very proud of that. And that's all I have.
Dr. Logan.
This evening, we also want to take the opportunity to recognize one of our retiring chiefs. Dr. Toni Turnquist is retiring as of July 31st after, I believe this is her 55th year in the district. Dr. Turnquist is also a proud South High graduate. So, Dr. Turnquist, if you could come to the front, I know that you don't want to, but...
This would be my one and only opportunity to correct the Superintendent. I'm not a South High graduate, although I spent 36 years there as a teacher and department head. I'm a graduate of this building.
Ah, that's correct, my apologies. Well, we're excited to honor you this evening, and we have a brief video that we'd like to share, and we promise that it's just nothing but uplifting and hopefully, I think it's all very accurate because they're all people in there who love and adore you, and you will be missed. We're looking forward to still seeing you around and inviting you to some ribbon cuttings, and I'll come and pick you up if I need to.
You may have to.
Please have a seat and enjoy the video, and then we have a short presentation.
She's a highly intelligent woman who does a superior job of keeping track of everything that goes over her desk.
Dr. Turnquist is the consummate professional. She will direct you and lead you in ways that you can never imagine yourself being, and is always there to help.
Knowledgeable, sophisticated, talented in many areas. I think she's really done an awful lot for educators and specifically for women in the field in Omaha Public Schools.
She provides necessary guidance and then allows her subordinate leaders to go out and execute their missions, so from that standpoint, I absolutely appreciate being a part of her team.
Toni Turnquist has been a great person to work with over the last four years. I have great respect for her. She's a person of high collegiality.
That commitment to the staff and the support of the staff, you can tell it's genuine because when she gets up and talks to operational staff, transportation, food service, purchasing, you can just tell that, you know, it's really a true feeling that she has for her staff.
I have always appreciated Dr. Turnquist's advice and insight. I knew I could go to her when I was frustrated, and I could go to her when I needed to think something out loud, and she was just always a great friend and a great confidant.
I think the biggest thing overall that I've learned from her is what I kind of call the human approach or the human touch of the work that we do, and that really just happens to really stem around something really straightforward, just doing the right thing. As many folks know, Dr. Turnquist has really been a champion of inclusion of small businesses into the district capital work, inclusion of students.
The projects that she and her department have managed, I would imagine it's thousands that have benefited staff around the district, and if I was in a school, I would be touting how that helped students and families in the community.
Lots of things about Toni are important in terms of teaching, but the most important thing is her ability to inspire students and to help them see that they could do things they never would have dreamed of, like singing onstage with Opera Omaha, performing onstage with the Omaha Community Playhouse. Those are partnerships that she engineered, and our kids at South never would have been able to be exposed even to those things if it weren't for her.
Toni has just touched so many lives, I know that. I know that she touched my life. I know that I would not be the person that I am, and I wouldn't have become a cartoonist or artist, but just the way that I think about the world and I see the world, I hope that I am carrying the lessons that she taught and that I have passed it along to others.
When you go to some conferences or group discussions, there'll be people wanting to discuss who your mentor is, what's a mentor, what does a mentor do for you, and so on, and the person that always comes to mind for me is Toni, because she was the person who helped me figure out how I wanted to be in the world. She's my mentor and my dearest friend.
She got her PhD, she encouraged me to get mine in English, and I did that, and so she's more than just my friend, but that's probably the most important thing. She's been my mentor and colleague.
She's one of a kind, she, there's nobody else that approaches the work like her, there's nobody else that can write an email like her. You get all her emotions in an email.
Toni really personifies the art of tact, which is telling somebody to go to hell and making them look forward to getting there.
And I don't remember what decision I made or what I did, but I had done something that she wasn't real happy about, and this is during the BlackBerry days. So, I was off-site trying to read this email on my BlackBerry Pearl, and I was getting chewed out, I could tell that, but it was very eloquently done. And so, I just called her, I just scrolled to the bottom and called her phone number, and I told her, I said, you know, I could tell I'd done something, but it's taking me too long to look up each one of these words to see what they mean, and we got along great ever since, so.
If you fall, she'll help pick you up, kick you in the behind and tell you to drive on.
Even when you knew that you probably hadn't done something right, it was because it wasn't in the best interest of the district.
Rarely does she let the teachable moment pass you by. In fact, last night, sitting at the Board Meeting, she was giving a grammar lesson to me, as well as dissecting the fashion trends of educators for the last 30 years in the district.
She always seems to have a good quote or a short story that she brings into a conversation at times or at a meeting.
When she quoted Dorothy Parker, wherever she went, including here, was against her better judgment.
The other thing that she uses a lot, which we all sort of get a kick out and tell her, hopefully it never comes true, is that she doesn't like long meetings or a lot of those types of things, so she said, well, I hope this gets over with before I die because I'm getting up to an age that, you know, it could happen any second.
One of my favorites has been when she comes to my counter, opens the newspaper, looks in the obituaries to see if she's appeared that day, and then she looks at me and says, if I'm in there, I'm going home.
I think it's best captured by this magazine cover of Dr. Turnquist, and I've been holding on to it because I was waiting for it to be worth the money, and now that she's retired, I thought it might be, but this magazine is, it's 60-plus in Omaha, which is great, but it calls her a living legend of OPS, and in the same category, it talks about past lives, past lives, and iron women. So, this was a magazine that was really devoted to Dr. Turnquist, and as you can see, it's hard to probably see, but she didn't take the time to find it for me, but she actually took the time to stamp it with her name twice, so I'm hoping that with her retirement that this will go for some big bucks on eBay.
Happy Retirement, Toni!
Just want to say thank you so very much for the caring, the direction, and the patience over all these years we've gotten to work together. You have made me the person I am today, and for this, I can never say thank you enough. Enjoy your retirement.
I told you about the lesson with the dry gin martinis. I hope for Toni that there are many in her future.
I would like to wish Toni a happy retirement, I would like to wish her the best.
I won't keep it long because I know you want this over with before anything happens to you, to kick back, put your feet up, and enjoy, and you don't have to send emails out at 1 o'clock in the morning to us.
I still value her friendship very much to this day, always will. And I wish her nothing but the best in retirement, but I doubt that she's going to be very retired.
Toni, I'd like to thank you personally and on behalf of all the people that don't really know how they benefited from your efforts. Enjoy your retirement, you earned it.
She'll go on and live the life she's been living, which is full and full of learning, and I hope to see her creating. I'd like to encourage her to do her artwork, she's an extraordinary artist.
Just well wishes for retirement, you know, happy and healthy, and thanks for all the service she's provided.
Toni, you have, you live your life joyfully, with joy, with wonder, with dedication, and I know that will continue into the future. So, Toni, it's been a pleasure, happy retirement.
But this is the token of our appreciation, and they represent how we feel about them. They're beautiful and multifaceted, so we'll... Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
I would like to say a couple of things. People ask me what I'm going to do in retirement, and I've never understood that question. First thing I'm going to do is not come to the TAC building, and I'm going to get over this shoulder surgery, it was much tougher this time than it was 22 years ago, and I have enjoyed every minute of all 55 years. I do miss kids still, that was the best part, but I do thank this Board for your enlightened approach to education, for your caring about every single one of the 53,000 children in this district, and for your support of the arts, which speaks volumes about your sophistication and your intellect and your sense of what life is all about. Everything we teach in school is important, from math, where we learn how we calculate, to social studies, where we learn how we organize and govern ourselves, to science, where we learn how we function as organisms and how we came to be here, but the arts speak about those things of why we bother to be here at all. So, I thank you for your continuous support for that, it means a great deal, and since I always, people roll my eyes in my department because I always like to quote ancient Greek philosophers for two reasons, one, they're pretty clever fellows, two, it's nostalgic, I went to high school with most of those guys, and one of my favorites is Aristotle, who said, "The greatest way to live with honor in this life is to be what we pretend to be." Thank you for all you do.
Mrs. Crackey.
For years and years and years, I have known Toni, and if you ever wanted to know anything, you called Toni Turnquist. She knew it, she knows the history, she's so good to work with, and she always does the right thing. I will truly very much miss Toni, and I hope that she knows how much we all have appreciated working with her. Thank you.
Mrs. Cassidy.
Thank you, President Snow. So, I had the pleasure of being at South High School as a student, one of the, during the four of the many years that Dr. Turnquist was at the helm, and I will say at the helm because there were a lot of very strong and powerful women that were teaching at South while I was there, and you were absolutely one of them in my eyes. I never had the pleasure of having you as an instructor because I don't have an ounce of artistic ability in even my pinky finger, but I will tell you that my friends that did have you or your sidekick, Ms. Kaznick, which I'd love to see her on that video, my friends that did have both of you made me want to be in art because they would always talk about how you were a wonderful teacher, but you were also pretty tough, so it always kind of made me wish that I had gone that route, but, you know, by the time I could have taken art, I was on a path to different things, and it's hard to fit things in your schedule, but I do wish that I would have had the pleasure of having you. You are South High, and I think that I always kind of looked at you as the matriarch of that school because you were there for, I'm not even sure how many years you were there, but I know it was quite a few, and I feel like you took that love of South Omaha and your love of South High, and it transferred over into our entire district when you took the position here at TAC. So, I just want to thank you from everyone at South High School particularly for all those years, and of course, for all your service here to our district, and just wish you congratulations, and I hope there are some dry martinis in your future.
Thank you. Again, thank you so much, Dr. Turnquist. Could we all give her another round of applause? Well, so she can get out of this meeting quick, we'll start the meeting now. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, just real quick, I want to, housekeeping, for the Board, H10, which is Consulting with PRISM, has been moved to Action Item I1A. We pulled that from Consent and put it on Action. Moving on to public comment, apologize. The next agenda, next item on the agenda is our public comment, we have one speaker. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you are in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know, and one will be provided for you. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name, and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking those types of details for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please submit it to Mr. Ray, and he will make sure each Board Member gets a copy. As a reminder, we ask that you please spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is 7:00 PM, and our only speaker is Ms. McGuire.
My name is Giesila McGuire. Giesila is spelled G-I-E-S-I-L-A, McGuire, M-C-G-U-I-R-E, and thank you for the opportunity to speak before the Board today. I'm a Jacobs Academy graduate and a participant of this district's Economic Inclusion Program. I own a small cleaning company and have had the opportunity to work for the district's bond program in the past and look forward to conducting business with the district in the future. I'm here today to talk about something else, though, it's called green cleaning in schools. In 2017, I attended a cleaning trade show in Chicago. There, I attended the Green Clean Schools Education Track. It consists of a two-day event presented by the Healthy School Campaign and ISSA, a renowned cleaning trade organization. They discussed a five-step program to implement green cleaning into schools and universities. Workshops and panel discussions led by health and technical experts, cleaning industry professionals, and members of the Healthy School Campaign Leadership Council all provided practical instructions when implementing green cleaning programs into schools. After attending this forum, I became a cleaning, a green cleaning advocate. I concluded that the EPA's indoor air quality programs tools for school, the green cleaning program is just as important. Unfortunately, there is not enough time right now for me to discuss in detail exactly what green cleaning is and what it all entails, but I can tell you its health and environmental benefits are priceless. I can provide resources later to anyone interested in finding out more about it. I can provide resources later to anyone interested in finding out more about it. There's a wealth of data from the EPA studies, trials, pilots, and case studies, which demonstrate that green cleaning improves the health of the building occupants, decreases chemical pollutants, uh, released into the environment, and improves both performance and productivity of the teachers and students, or anyone who's working in, in our buildings. In addition, data-driven conclusions shows that comprehensive green cleaning programs earn substantial return on investment with the latest tech, if you're using the latest technologies in the cleaning industry, as it pertains to cleaning equipment, supplies, and processes. During the past three years, I have attended many webinars for, uh, provided by the EPA and classes and instruction on the subject. Recently, I learned during an EPA indoor air quality webinar that a comprehensive green cleaning program should be institutionalized into, uh, every school district's facility capital plan because it requires the input and commitment for, for all stakeholders, including the senior level of the organization. In addition, it is in line, as, as far as Omaha, uh, is concerned, it's in line with the objectives of the bond program's goals stated in the first category of the facility's capital plan, uh, fire, life, safety, security, and technology upgrades to all schools. Children and Falco D members will spend approximately 1,000 hours per year in school facilities. The issue, this issue is very imperative, and, uh, there's less than 50% of the schools right now in America that have an effective green cleaning, uh, program in place. So I just wanted to provide this information on. I'm very passionate about it. It's a very serious issue. One contact person that I work with quite frequently is a person called Tracy Unger, and she works for the Environmental Protection Agency, and she is one of the representatives of the agency that goes out and advocates, uh, for green cleaning programs to be established in, in school districts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda, um, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
No approval.
There's a motion in the floor by Ms. Crackey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ryan. Any abstentions? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Smith.
Aye.
Snipe.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to our action item, I-1A, and I believe it was pulled by Mr. Pearlman, so I'll let you have the mic.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly voice my opposition to this contract, and it has virtually nothing to do with PRISM and the consultants there, because, uh, the consultant there is one of my favorite people I've met since being on the Board, and I think she is fully capable and, uh, can be very helpful to the district. It only speaks to the, uh, amount of money, uh, being spent on it. Um, I don't know how many hours per day, per week, per month is being worked by this consulting agency. I don't know if Board President has that information to share, um, but it, it just comes down to the, the amount of money for the contract, so I just want to voice my opposition. I need to vote no.
Thank you. Um, I can, when we have our next meeting, I'll bring that up to our consultant and see if they can get a report that I can send out to the entire Board of hours and weeks worked. Um, so, uh, Mrs. Godding.
So I guess I have a question. Is it, is there, and then maybe I missed it, an hourly rate for that? Was it $4,000 a month?
So it's 4,000 per month, not to exceed 28,000.
So is there a, um, I guess I would be curious to know what the rate is too per hour. Does anybody know?
Dr. Logan.
We will, we will get that for you. What our consultant does is to, uh, hold the meetings, which are typically twice a month. We're not meeting this month because we are taking a hiatus in July. Um, and, uh, but I will say that she is meeting with all of the individual, we're not, we didn't have a meeting, typically the meeting is before the Board meeting, but she is meeting with each individual member, uh, to, she has one-on-ones with members to see, uh, to continue to gather their input about the process and how she can make the process better, ideas that they may have. She attends, uh, uh, meetings with, um, uh, our legislators, who are very interested in this work and have requested to, uh, meet with her. Uh, she is available to consult with the superintendent on any calls that I make about, uh, the work. We probably speak about twice a month. My calendar, um, likely reflects that, uh, to include, uh, in-person, uh, meetings, uh, and that's the, the scope of her work. Some of the work is, uh, done here at the TAC building with our group, uh, but much of the work is done, uh, in the field with individuals, um, during those meetings, and some meetings occur in Lincoln, uh, with individuals who, uh, are interested. She also has met with our, um, discussed, uh, some of the items that are ongoing with our, uh, actuary and with some of the folks who have expertise, to include a member of our coalition, um, who is also an OSERS trustee, but also is a professional in the pension industry, working for a private company. So, um, I would say a lot of it is gathering expertise, uh, to inform the process, but mostly working to make sure that we stay together as a coalition, which, uh, as you know, takes a lot of hours and difficult conversations with all of the different constituencies, although we all have a, uh, connection to OPS. We don't always have, see things in the same way, and to keep us, uh, focused on our, on problem solving, uh, problem solution finding, rather, uh, than problem solving, um, towards our pension issue, as we all have, um, everyone at this table, uh, has a stake in seeing a resolution. So that's, that's the scope of, of her work.
Mrs. Godding.
So I'm, I'm good with all the scope. I guess I just would like to see what the hourly rate is, kind of like, I think the CFO system. So I would probably vote no, and I will vote no until I have that, not because I don't, I, I agree with the work that's being done. I would just like to see the hourly rate in there so we can have a sense for, does it get used up? Since it's a 28,000 annual, is that going to be gone in five months, six months? So it, it would be good to know that, I think.
Certainly, we'll get that to, uh, all board members, and that will update on Sunday. Actually, not this Sunday because I'll be on vacation, but the following Sunday. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will echo Dr. Logan's comments. Bringing every member of the coalition together, um, it's, it is beautiful. I mean, it, it's one of those things that, uh, everyone comes with, um, their own lenses, and trying to put on the same lens in that meeting, uh, took us some time, but I'm starting to see, I wouldn't say starting, we have seen, uh, the group come together on consensus and building, uh, ideas, and I believe Dr. Holman has attended an entire retreat with them, and that was all to the work of, um, the consultant, Linda Richards. Um, Mr. Pearlman, I just have one question. Is your same issue of voting no the same reason for Mrs. Godding's that just wanting to know the rates and hours, or just the overall, or is it something different? I just want to make sure.
Well, right, without, yeah, I mean, essentially, sure.
I'm trying to see here on the contract. And the reason why I say that is if, if we pulled this item just to get a full consensus 9-0 vote on the Board, um, I just wanted to make sure that was...
The project, uh, I'm going to send you a copy of the project plan, the summer project plan. That way you'll be able to see the scope of the work. Uh, I'm not sure it was included as an attachment, um, but I will send it to you right now.
No worries. Uh, Dr. Logan, real quick, if we push this contract vote off until the next first meeting in August, I believe it's the 5th, um, would that affect this contract, or?
We can do that. That's fine.
Okay. All right. So, we didn't entertain a motion, did we? No. So we'll just leave it here and bring it back on our August 5th meeting with that information. I think Dr. Logan will send that, um, when she's not on vacation. That's good. Um, and we'll have the vote on August 5th. Moving on to item I-2A, budget update.
Good evening, President Snow, Superintendent Dr. Logan, members of the Board. I'd like to share an update on the progress of the 2019-2020, um, proposed budget preparation this evening. We've moved a long way through the budget process since the last update that we did in April. Uh, we have many items that are in the completed column now, and a few items that are still being finished as we move toward the submission of the budget in September. So items that have been completed in the budget process at this point include school staffing conferences and the discretionary budgets, off-formula allocations for schools, central office staffing and budgets. Um, negotiations have been finalized and approved by the Board for several bargaining groups at this point. State aid certification was finally finalized in June this year, so we were happy to see that come in. For the 2019-2020, uh, school year, we're anticipating a 5.8% increase in state aid year over year, with, um, a total increase of $15.9 million expected. If you'll recall, in the 2018-2019, um, school year, we actually had a $12.5 million decrease in state aid. So for the two years, 2018-19 and 2019-20, we will have approximately a 1.2% increase in state aid, or $3.3 million. We also have in the budget placeholders for property valuations. We will not, um, get the final property valuation information from Douglas and Sarpy County until on or about August 20th, so that will be one of the, the last items that we wrap up in the budget process. We do now have the estimated annual retirement contribution, the ARC, both for, um, the amount that we will pay, um, at the end of this fiscal year, so in August, and an estimated amount that we will use for budget purposes for the 2019-2020 budget. Um, if you'll recall, the, for the 2018-2019 school year, the ARC that we used in the budget was $21.3 million. Um, in January, after the January actuarial study, which we received in May, um, the new estimated number for, the actual number for 2018-19 is $18.2 million. So $3.1 million less than what we had in the budget. Our intent at this point is recognizing the importance of drawing, moving down the pension liability as quickly as we can. Our intent at this point is to go ahead and pay what we had in the budget toward the pension liability this year, the $21.3 million. Then for next year, for 2019-2020, um, the budget will basically remain flat because the estimated number at this point for next year is $21.4 million. Items that are still open within the budget process and will be finished, um, over the next, um, month, basically, um, including the negotiations continue with several of the bargaining groups, and hopefully many of those will wrap up before we get to the end of the budget process. Um, I mentioned the final property valuations will come in on or around August 20th, and then we continue to, um, review the budget, look for any anomalies in the budget, and make, um, edits as we have additional information to both revenue and expense at this point. The 2019-2020 budget is focused on students and staff and the technology and facilities needed to support them. In the proposed budget will be investments including elementary English language textbook adoption, a $7 million investment, providing a significant update in the language arts materials available for students and staff. Implementation of the new bus transportation contract approved by the Board. This is a $2.2 million, um, increase in transportation costs, continuing to provide students and families the transportation support needed for students to be in the classroom ready to learn. Paying benefits for staff is a priority. Agreements with several bargaining units have been completed and approved by the Board, and additional bargaining groups are engaged in negotiations. The proposed budget will include a proposal to get the district back on track with planned obsolescence, uh, for student and staff computers, with an initial phase focused on elementary grades three through six, with an estimated cost of $2.8 million for the 2019-2020 school year. In addition, there will, um, we have the ongoing investments in new facilities to relieve overcrowding in schools and to support continued growth, and we will look forward to the opening of Gifford Park Elementary this fall. In addition, the proposed budget will include dollars for ongoing, ongoing building renovation work, um, and necessary work that is not included within the bonds, um, including things like the ongoing cycle of repairs and replacements of athletic fields and tracks. In putting the budget together and developing the budget, it's an exercise in delivering against the vision and mission of the district while balancing sources of revenue and expense. When you think about revenue or income for the district, there are basically two large buckets that we look at: state aid and other state and federal receipts, along with property tax and other local receipts. At this point, we anticipate that for the 2019-2020 budget, the split between those two will be approximately 54% state aid and other state and federal receipts, and 46% property tax and other local receipts. On the expense side, um, our most important expense, um, and clearly where our priority lies, is in salary and benefits. Um, we anticipate that for 2019-2020, in the proposed budget, that will represent approximately 79% of total expense, with the remaining 21% of expense covering everything else it takes to run the district. So operations, buildings and grounds, purchase services and supplies, utilities, um, textbook replacements, um, everything else, um, that it will take to be successful as a district within the school year. The line item that we use as the balance to both of those is the unassigned fund balance. Um, we try to stay as balanced as we can without tapping into that unassigned fund balance, but we can use that if needed. Um, our goal this year in putting the budget together was to have an unassigned fund balance at or above 17%. We finished the last fiscal year at 18.5%. At this point, the way the budget is rolling up with the inputs that we have, we anticipate being able to achieve that goal of being above 17%, as we close out, um, the budget. If you recall earlier, um, when we met this spring, as part of the budget process, we targeted, and I can report tonight, identified, um, $10 million of savings across several areas, including supplies, program efficiencies, equity adjustments, contract and purchase services, and redundancy and efficiency focused primarily on central office. So we have achieved the $10 million that we were looking for there, um, across all areas. Most areas were very near or above the amounts that we targeted. And when you look at the, the reductions that we made within the budget there, savings were really found by looking for unspent budget dollars, looking for, um, updates in allocation methods. methodologies to reflect current needs, focusing on equity in teacher and student ratios, and identifying central office efficiencies. Where we are in the timeline now, budgets did go out to school on or before, to schools in a preliminary form on or before July 1st. We wanted to get those out to the schools before school let out for the summer, but with the delay in receiving state aid, we held up those budgets to make sure we had the dollars to support our budget. We're doing the budget update this evening. As I mentioned, on or about August 20th, we will receive our final valuations from Douglas and Sarpy County. We then anticipate wrapping up the finalization of the budget by August 31st, the end of the month, and then propose a budget hearing and having the budget to the Board for approval on September 4th. With that, I would be happy to take any questions that you have.
First of all, thank you so much for the presentation. Always admire your work and the timeline that you have for the Board. So does anybody have any questions or comments? Mrs. Cottie?
First of all, I want to say thank you because, you know, I've talked a lot about the elementary ELA textbook adoption, so I want to thank Dr. Logan for getting that done. And just had a couple of questions because I've had a number of parents who even came down to look at all the textbooks, which was great. The question, and so I'm not quite sure, are we in the process of, during the first semester, taking a look at selection? Can you just give us a timeline on that? I don't think I can adequately answer that question.
Thank you for the question. So we have, we had a request for proposal that went out, and then we had several vendors who responded to the request for proposal based on criteria that would address the needs of our students, so they needed to present their materials based on that, based on that criteria. For example, we wanted to make sure that we selected a vendor that had dual-language materials. We wanted to select a vendor that attended to students with a variety of special needs and so on and so forth. And once that happened, we had an opportunity for public input, and we also worked with EdReports.org, which is a nonprofit think tank that rates materials, gives it basically a color code for its alignment with national standards. That's really, really super important, and college and career readiness standards to be even more specific. And then we narrowed down to two, and at this point, two are some of our several, in every, every elementary school will have a pilot for eight weeks, and after that, we will collect some data, working with research and evaluation, to get, to look at how teachers are reacting, how children are responding to the resources. We'll also collect data from parents because they will also interface with it because they're students, will, and then make a recommendation to the Board. On August the 12th, I believe, we are going to have a day, we might have changed that date, but right now, I know, I thought it was originally the 12th. We're going to have an opportunity for the vendors of the two selected to come in and make a presentation for the superintendent. The Board members have been invited to that presentation, and we will also have a representative from Ed Reports. Really very excited about having a nonpartisan, for lack of better terminology, who is not a part of any of the textbook or the vendor companies to come in and also give us some, she won't really be giving feedback because she can't, but will be there to observe our process for fidelity and provide me feedback about our process from that lens. And then that point, I think it'd be about almost mid-year, we'll be ready to make a recommendation to the Board of Education for adoption. One other thing I wanted to point out, the technology refresh is really important as well because this is mostly an elementary refresh in terms of planned obsolescence because we can't buy any materials, you can't, you shouldn't buy any materials now that don't have a significant interface on the web, and so parents can, you know, access the materials at home. There are Tier Two or Tier Three materials, which are support materials for students who may need more reinforcement that are embedded in these programs, and typically they have a digital interface. So it's important that students have the latest tool that they need in order to be able to use them to, to use them to their maximum potential in terms of the kinds of resources that are available on the, depending on which one that we choose. So that's kind of a timeline, is that somewhat helpful? But yeah, the pilots will start right when school starts. We have some training that will happen right during curriculum days, they'll have it right. And I appreciate Mrs. Comine, who's nodding her head in hope, and she hasn't done this yet, so I think I'm pretty much on track. We've been discussing it for quite some time, but we're very excited about this opportunity, and we will hopefully choose well. Yeah, so, so yeah, so implementation, well typically what will happen is we will, after we make a selection, then we will have a white glove delivery service so that we have the books delivered and set up in classrooms. It takes a lot off the teachers that they don't have to do. And then a training cycle that will start during the second semester and over the summer, and also in any contract would have some of the folks from the vendor company who would be onsite and embedded with our team during the year to provide the support and so that, you know, these people are not going to stay forever, so that our team is prepared to do the development from there on out. They would be with us for the entire first year to make sure our implementation goes well. And actually, it's year two where we have to worry about our fidelity of implementation. Year one, people are trying it out. Year two, we should be in very well positioned to implement on our own with a great degree of fidelity.
Thank you.
Mrs. Crackey?
I think I understood that this was the language arts program you're talking about?
That's correct, Mrs. Crackey.
Okay, and so when they pilot it, it will be in the fall?
Yes, ma'am.
And you said every elementary school, so they will choose one or the other, or will it be assigned to them, what company?
It will be assigned, I believe. We're gonna, no, oh, I'm sorry. There'll be two classrooms, they'll each pilot each. So the each, each, each school will pilot both.
Each school will pilot?
Both, but different grade levels.
That's good.
Yes.
Okay. And then we will be able to look at those before they, before fall?
Yes, on August the 12th, there's an opportunity for Board members to have a presentation from the vendors along with me, ask any questions, see all of the materials, and, you know, I know there'll be an opportunity for you to, as you visit schools, perhaps to chat with teachers, and I'm sure that they will send you feedback on how they're experiencing one versus the other.
It should be interesting.
Thank you.
Mr. Proman?
Thank you. I may have missed it, but I'm looking at page five. What is equity adjustment?
Equity adjustment is the work that was done to ensure that we have the right ratio of, sorry, I'm going to find it here, right ratio of teachers to students in the classroom.
Okay. And I think my only other question is, is the district receives a significant amount of philanthropic dollars every year. I believe somewhere 3% to 5% of the annual budget. How are those sort of items budgeted ahead of time to ensure continuity of programming and things like that?
Many of those grant dollars do not align with our fiscal year. They each have their own timelines, so as those are coming up, you know, each, each grant is evaluated on its, on its own and in its particular timeline. So it's, it's less of an activity at budget time, more of an ongoing activity in understanding if a grant is coming to an end, are there dollars that need to, need to move into the general fund if it's a program we're going to continue to support, or does anything particular need, need to happen there?
Are there any significant programs like that that are coming up in the, in the next fiscal year? And the one that comes to mind is, I think it was three years ago with the social workers in the school and that program. And so I just, I remember when that was first being discussed, the importance of that continuity was something that was highlighted, and so, you know, I'm not asking you specifically about that, but it's those sorts of things that I want to just make sure that we are keeping an eye out, you know, 12 to 18 months down the line.
We actually, it's a really good point. We actually have a meeting in August to review that as we are starting to prepare for the 2021 budget to look at a budget, I'm sorry, a grant ramp down and how we would, how we could, can consider absorbing, for lack of a better word, some of the positions into the district. We're actually making some decisions about our staffing needs based on a ramp down, not just of that grant, but other grants where we have significant full-time equivalents, FTEs, so that we don't have an abrupt end of service to our young people. So we are already planning for the next cycle for 2021, beginning in August, so that we'll be well-prepared to start telling the Board in January, early on in the budget cycle, how we are considering that work. So good point. Thank you for bringing it up. It's not just that particular one, there are several others where we have full-time equivalents that are being paid on grant dollars. And I'm not talking about federal grants or state grants, I'm talking about other either philanthropic, mostly philanthropic grants. So thank you for raising it.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I do have one question. It's about the budget hearing. I know the board meeting starts at 6:30. Will the budget hearing be at 6:30 or will it happen at 6:00? It will happen at 6:00? Okay, just making sure. Send that on our, send an invite to the Board so we have it. I appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, our audit update, and Mrs. Byrd is doing two for two today. There we go.
I am two for two tonight, lucky you. Tonight I will share the quarterly update on audit follow-ups from the 2017-2018 audit along with some initial highlights of the upcoming, where we are in terms of the 2018-2019 audit work has already, has already kicked off there. So to refresh your memory a little bit, when we came out of the 2017-2018 audit, Syme Johnson, our external audit partner, identified three internal control deficiencies. The most severe and significant of the three, a material weakness around accrued compensated absences and errors in the calculation of accrued sick leave. Then decreasing in level of significance, but also termed as significant deficiency, the financial reporting process, timely and accurate financial statements. And the third item, an identified deficiency in capital asset accounting with a desire to reduce manual processes in the future to decrease the potential or risk of misstatement. So for all three of those, the district developed a corrective action plan, and we have been working against that corrective action plan, and I had an update for you when we met in April. And so we've done some further work on, on some of these items and things that were in process at that point. Many of those are now complete, so I can take you through those. So in terms of material weakness around accrued compensated absences, we have adjusted the timing of that activity to increase the review period. We have established primary points of contact and centralized the review of data and the calculation of distributions. The benefits team has provided training with the accounting team, and those items are all complete. A big element of this was testing the new processes and procedures. So the work has been done to do a live scenario test using current year data as of a point in time, and the accounting team has done the calculation, excuse me, they've done the calculation, and the calculation is now with Syme Johnson they are reviewing. They are reviewing it using the same criteria that they will use when they come in to review for the audit, and if they have any follow-ups or anything they'd like us to document further or other changes to implement, we will do that coming out of their response. We expect to have their response by the end of July. Corrective action plan number two, thank you, is related to the timely and timeliness and accuracy of financial statements. If you recall, the, the significant issue that we had here during the audit was that we were, as we were moving into the audit period in October, in November, we were also going through our stabilization post the PeopleSoft upgrade. And we did have some significant issues in terms of payroll and getting payroll to the ledger, which slowed down our financial statements significantly. We had no problem paying people, but we had trouble just moving it from an accounting perspective, from the payroll system to the ledger. We have made, significant work has been done there by a lot of, a lot of folks on the accounting team and the IMS team and some of our consulting partners. And I can report that the last three periods we've been able to close the financial statements on the internal calendar of the, of the accounting team. So we believe that that, that one is behind us at this point. We've also worked to identify entries that will require modifications as we go through our year-end process from cash books to accrual books. Remember, that's the one thing that makes us unique to any other district in the state is that cash to accrual conversion. And we have gone through and identified in great detail, more than we have ever done in the past, the audit timeline and have assigned every single activity we believe needs to happen in preparation for the audit and in preparation for the closing of the books, has all been assigned and identified to a specific member of the accounting team. And an ongoing item that should always be ongoing within the department, we've, we are working to eliminate any self-imposed bottlenecks through cross-training, and that's just an ongoing effort that needs to be happening all the time that we're cross-training folks. So if someone's out or sick, we have a backup. The third corrective action plan is around the identified deficiency for capital asset accounting. The primary work, capital asset accounting does have some manual, significant manual processes associated with it and some significant spreadsheet work associated with it. We have been working with, with IMS and Accenture, one of our external partners, to resolve a couple of things, two primary issues that are, came out of the PeopleSoft upgrade that we really weren't expecting, but as how, as happens when you have an upgrade, sometimes things pop up that you weren't expecting to change. One of those is near resolution is in testing to go to production. The second one, we are still working, but at this point, we do not anticipate this creating any holdup as we go through the year-end. We will either get it resolved or we will work around it to get capital assets finished out for audit purposes. The ongoing opportunity here is to look for ways to take some of those manual processes out, some of the elimination of manual entries that are happening. There's different ways that could be done. We could tap into other accounting modules to do that, either with our current vendor or bolt-on opportunities. We have not gotten into that this year because we needed to resolve the issues we had with the current system and the current upgrade, but that's definitely something that will be on the radar as we continue into the future. For 2018 and 2019, as I mentioned, we have already kicked off some of the audit work. For 2018 and 2019, as I mentioned, we have already kicked off some of the audit work, June 25th through 29th. Syme Johnson, our audit partners, were here on site doing preliminary field work and planning with our accounting team. On July 8th, we had an entrance conference with the accounting team and Syme Johnson and the Board of Education Budget Audit Committee. So, we talked about deliverables of the audit and the timeline for the audit and communications. And we are gearing up for October 1st, which is when the audit field work will begin. With that, I would be happy to answer any additional questions you have around the audit.
Thank you. Mrs. Godden, would you like to add to that, just from the budget committee?
Sure. Yeah, no, that's great. So, I want to thank you for working on those deficiencies and weaknesses, et cetera. I think that's, you know, we're well underway to making progress from where we were a year ago, which is really wonderful. There was one other significant item, which isn't addressed here, but that was the reason why we ended up with a qualified opinion, and you guys are working towards something there.
Yes.
Related to actuarial work. So, can you just share that with the board as far as
Sure.
The corrective action that's being
Yeah.
Done there?
So, it wasn't, we didn't have a, an identified deficiency per se, but we did not adopt GASB 75, which relates to post-employment retirement benefits. For us, it's particularly in the area of healthcare. We did not have access to actuarial information last year in order to estimate the liability of those post-employment retirement benefits. So, we are seeking an actuarial study. We have an RFP out. We actually are, this week, expecting to see the responses to the RFP for that with the intent of getting that work, that actuarial study completed, so that we can actually measure that liability as part of this year's audit cycle.
And it will also give us last year's liability as well, correct, for roll forward?
Should, yes.
Is that right? I would think so, and for the bond rating agency folks to see as well. So, that's the good thing about that. So, I look forward to many of these items being addressed this year.
Thank you.
Real quick, on the GASB 75.
Yes.
That's affecting every school district, so it's not just OPS that has to do this process for liability? Not exactly. I just want to clarify.
Well, because we're accrual basis, GASB 75 applies to us in that regard. Everybody else gets to push a footnote where it impacts our statement of net position directly.
Yep.
And so, that's part of the reason, that's why we ended up with a qualified opinion, because the statement of net position could not be accurately stated. And so, this corrective action and getting an actuary to perform the work that needs to be done should address that issue and will give us a beginning balance because of GASB 75 implementation for last year, and then the roll forward should flow through this year. And I think it's good for two years, so last year and this year, the unfortunate part is we'll have to do it again
Have to do it again.
For the next year.
Yep. That's correct.
Thank you. That was very helpful. Does anybody else have any other questions or comments? Thank you guys so much. And the Budget Committee will be getting ongoing updates through this process as well throughout the year. Thank you again, Mrs. Byrd.
Thank you.
Dr. Holman.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, real estate, negotiations, pending litigation, personnel, and legal advice.
There's a, there's a motion to go into closed session by Dr. Holman. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Snide.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Proman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, and legal counsel, real estate, negotiations, pending litigation, personnel, and legal advice. Let the record reflect the board will run the closed session at 7:48. Thank you.
Let the rec reflect the main's adjournment at 9:09.